Our agenda didn't get quite updated. I know some of y'all probably here for the special events thing. Apologize for the paper, for the newspaper putting that in there, number one. Because it was supposed to, in theory, it was supposed to be a talking item for the planning and development. Wasn't supposed to be voted on, but now that's going on, just a talking item for another item that we've got going on in another part of the county to see if we can come up with a plan. We knew last Thursday, we had a work session last Thursday morning, the commissioners did, this item was brought up for just a second, and it was killed that quick. So, if you're here for the special events, please stay, because I know this crowd would like to have, you know, some, some, some company as this goes on. But not the one resoning tonight, but the special events ordinance, as you saw in the paper, that was kind of...
Are you filming me?
Mm-hmm.
That was...
I don't have to do that.
That was, that should have been, should have been, this morning, that should have been more definite than what they just put out there. I'm just gonna be quite frank with you. We are not, the commissioners, and I'm assuming this board here is not looking past something like that, because to be honest with you, I've got family, and I've got friends of family that's got over 50 people in it.
Amen.
So, I can assure you, we're looking over everybody's personal agenda and beliefs to that point. We are still a ruled community, and we're not looking at coming up with ordinances. We've got some ordinances already on the books, it's been on the books for years. All we gotta do is get them in force. But I am not one to sit up here, and I don't think these ladies and gentlemen here are ones that say we're passing the ordinances and then not, not... We don't have a way to enforce them. So I could, we could see some issues coming up that's... But the all purpose of that was just a talking point. For these individuals, no, there is other options that other counties are doing, it's not gonna fit for Pickens County. And I'm just gonna leave it at that. So, please, y'all stay. I don't want this former here to sit outside, but if that's your concern, I'm gonna rest your fears for that, that point. So, Richard, do you have anything else to... And he, Mr. Alderman here is, is new, he's done a great job, and his, his job is to bring different ideas to the planning commission as we go forward, to rezoning requests and this, any other issues that citizens have out in the county. That's his job. So I'm not throwing no rocks at him, he's just giving us different options to go by. And we knew last week that it might not be a very good idea, and we were not interested in it, and so it was supposed to have been dropped. I'm sorry it got on the agenda, but it is, you know. But, being a multi-person board, the only way, and I can tell you one more point, being a multi-person board to the sole commissioner, I cannot have a meeting with Ms. Becky Denny or Gary Barnes to talk about any discussions until we bring it out in open meeting. Now, being sole commissioner, we've probably killed her real quick. So we have to talk about these things in open public. How it gets printed or viewed on the website is another thing altogether. But that's what you call open government, to get that discussion out here. Yes, sir?
And then, if it does come up in public comments today, that it will just be shot down that quick, saying that it's not, it's not, it's gonna be discussed?
It's already shot down.
It's already shot down. I mean, I'm saying, as far as public comments go.
Yeah. Anybody, now, now, granted, we are a, we're a democratic republic.
Sure.
Somebody can walk in this board here and request this board here to look at this special ordinance, special permit ordinance. That's their right to ask the public, to ask this board to do that. And that's their legal right to do so. At that point, it can be discussed again, but it's got more steps than just this board here. There's gotta be open meetings, when you, any time you change an ordinance or avenue or you're gonna have open meetings. You gotta go through more like this, you gotta have open meetings, town hall meetings, and then it's gotta get to the commissioner before we can act on it, whether we're gonna approve or disapprove. Lot more steps to happen than just, just bring it, bring it to the public, and this board here is voting on it, and it goes through.
If I may, if I may, a couple things. Hypothetically, let's say you brought this back up tonight in the public comments. I can just about assure you that it's not, regardless of what you bring up, it would not be voted on tonight. Okay? And I'll go back to our last meeting. The reason I believe in, y'all, please feel free to correct me if I'm off track here. The reason this was even brought up to begin with was a piece of property off Cove Road that was wanting to have a special bit. And the opposition, in this board, you know, we observe and respect and adhere and admire and support free, you know, property rights, but at the same time, we're trying to find a happy balance between what's the best for the overall community, when there, this room was filled up, and there was, everyone in here was against a special, or, you know, bit taking place of this property. And, uh, so you're trying to find a happy balance that'll support property rights, but also provide the peace and tranquility of a given area or neighborhood. So that, and, and, and I, I'm assuming, and a lot of times, we're having to think right off the cuff here to try to pacify everyone, and to be honest with you, I never even thought about it, and, and I'm sure the rest of the members here realize or think about, there's already ordinances that would, this would fall under anyhow. So, we were trying to find a happy balance for the property owners, so they could do what they wanted to do, and then the public, that, to try to make them happy too. So if that's, if I'm wrong, y'all please jump in and correct me, because it wouldn't be the first time I've been in.
Yes, sir.
We're just here as concerned citizens.
That's great.
See how government works, you know?
Hey, you know, again, you are more than welcome, like I said, probably before you came in, just wanna let y'all know, if you have one link, you're more welcome to link, but we'd love to have you sit in and see what we do, and get, keep and stay involved, and, you know, we like to have this room full.
But anyhow. Any other question? Because we gotta get, they have about two more minutes before they crank it up, but...
Yeah, Ben, I'm curious, just on the timeline, like it was on their agenda, and, and I actually think it's a good decision to pull, I mean, I don't think it's a good idea, that's not the issue, but did the commissioners, did y'all vote to pull it off of their agenda?
No. We can't vote, if you're no, we can't vote during a work session. But while we're having a work session, it can be discussed during the work session. And we cannot have an official vote, but if we feel like it's not, or if I feel like it's not a good idea, I just bring it out to the work session, it's not a good idea. Becky probably brought it out to the work session, it's not a good idea. Jerry probably brought it out to the work session, it's not a good idea. Guess what? We saw the email, we started thinking, it's not a good idea.
And I, so the commissioners pulled it off the planning commission's agenda?
The commissioners recommended that. The planning and development officer might wanna reconsider and, and discuss it. Bill can run it on the agenda that is there, but they can vote not to have any discussion on it and kill it.
But y'all actually pulled it off the agenda, though.
Actually, still on the door out front.
It's still on the agenda.
Yeah. But in theory, yeah, it's, as far as I'm concerned, if it get, if it gets up to the commission board, I don't know how my votes are, I can't speak for Jerry and Becky, I'm just gonna leave it at that one. So that's true. Yes, sir?
And, and just to clarify too, yeah, I appreciate your time, Mr. Jones and Mr. Cool. The application was a request by planning and development staff, and because it was not from John Smith or Tim Jones, whoever, private individual, because it was an application by planning and development staff, planning and development staff can withdraw the application. And, um, so therefore, the application has been withdrawn by staff, not necessarily by the planning commissioner, the board of commissioners, but by staff, because we initiated the application.
That makes, that makes perfect sense.
Anybody got any other questions? Can I wait my supper? But again, I wanna thank y'all for being here, and again, I wanna thank the board. They go through a lot, and have been through a lot the last few years handling these issues. And I know their, this one as well as others are hot topics, as Dan can attest to, they have been through some battles over the years. And zoning board is not one of the nicest boards to be on, but it is, it is refreshing with the fact that citizens are getting done, and I do appreciate this group of individuals giving their time to, to do this for the county and for the taxpayers that, that y'all are sitting here. So, thank you very much for coming out tonight, I know it's cold and windy. Thank you for your concern. I mean, that's what we wanna see, we wanna see no more people concerned. We wanna keep it civil, but we wanna keep more people concerned, and I wanna thank this group here for the work they've done. And also, Dan and, and Mary, y'all done done a great job, and they've been all kind to us over the years. So, anyway, just wanna just put that out there, hopefully the meeting will go great tonight, and if you've got any concerns, my email address is on the website, please email me, we gotta talk to you. Good night, y'all have a fun day.
Good job.
Okay. The, uh, called the, officially called meeting in order. If you would please stand for the indication of flagrant wickets. Our gracious heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather in the new year, and allowing us to gather freely to make the best decisions possible for the citizens of Pickens County. Please be with us throughout this, the rest of this year. Thank you for all those that came out to, to get involved and see what goes on at this meeting. Please keep us safe, be with our county and state leaders, and our nation's leaders, and that, as well as our nation's soldiers that are fighting for our freedoms. In all these many favors, I think, and things I ask in our son's name, amen.
Amen.
The flagrant wickets, we do fight on the United States of America, and we're developing a voice of justice, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as far as all. Item two on the agenda is reading and approval of last month's minutes. Motion to approve. I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes last month's meeting, please raise your hand. Third item is old business, we have none, so I'm tempted to send a new business, which is item four. We do have one rezon request. I'd like to announce that we're gonna have an open hearing, open hearing on this rezon request, and Richard, if you would give us the county's recommendation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Kegel. Timothy Butler has submitted a rezoning application for 3.25 acres at the intersection of Highway 53 and Big Ridge Road on the west side of the county. Current zoning is Highway Business HB. This is actually two tracts of land owned by the same family, and so it's eligible for one rezoning case. The rezoning as proposed is to rezone from commercial to residential, so that the property can continue to be used for residential use and be in greater legal conformity. Planning Commission, or, excuse me, Planning Development Department recommends approval.
Thank you. Mr. Butler, was there anything you'd like to add or comment?
No, sir. I appreciate all your time and effort.
I see, was this Jackie's?
It is. Yes.
It's been media days, everyone's a good role there, so.
Yes, sir.
There you go. Are there any questions from the board?
Normally, everybody wants to go the other way. You wanna go residential to business.
Jackie Fane, she was my first cousin. She told everybody she was my aunt, but she was my first cousin. She lived on that piece of property eighty-some odd years. My grandmother's house was next door to it, so that's, that's the old family property. And Jackie ran a flourish out of that location for roughly seventy years. And she passed away last February, and I'm currently living in that residence, and, you know, there, there's no reason for it to be commercial anymore, and it'd just be better, I think, all the way around to go back to residential.
I'm just curious, is the point, if you have Jackie down as an opportunity for, for now? Is it still in her name?
Yeah, the, the house is sale, is still in her name because of a reverse, she had the home and a reverse mortgage. I'm working with a reverse mortgage company now, so I just, we're putting both on there just so there wasn't any confusion.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Butler? About your motion, do you have any other, do, 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 public? Uh, no one signed up.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second. Yeah, motion to approve in a second, any discussion? All those in favor of the rezon request, please raise your hand. Motion to approve.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. The next item that's on the agenda, which Robert just explained to us, was the special events permit, which had been struck through the agenda, so that will not be discussed or voted on or brought up. I will give y'all the courtesy, is there any other questions regarding that? Yes, sir?
He mentioned that there are other ordinances that would cover this.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and I've read one of them on one of the emails. Now, does Pickens County have a noise ordinance?
Um, not directly, there is one, I'll, I'll read this, this is under, and you find this on the website, section forty-two dash two, okay. Forty-two dash two, under disorderly conduct, you look at item number six, create, buy, or in any manner loud noises which disrupt, disturb, or otherwise interfere with the peace and tranquility of the public. That one, and then there's, you could probably say number eighteen as well, to, to a certain extent, would fall underneath that one.
Okay. But looking at, looking at that, that just, that gives the county the enforcement that they need.
Yes, sir.
So, any of this other would, it would be duplication?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we don't wanna be like the IRS tax center, we're, you know. We're a small county, we don't need that.
Right.
And the, and the marshals, and the sheriffs obviously don't need that too, so. But yeah, and again, going back to last month, again, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I'm sure it didn't even occur to the board that there was already this, this orderly conduct ordinance already on the books. We were trying to, you know, pacify everyone involved to a certain extent, so that's prob, I mean, I'm sad, so that's, I can safely say that's why that was even brought up.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, sir?
I got a question on the, I don't have it here, but what you say, disorderly conduct, does that constitute to mean the overburdened noise of a wedding, I think, that was brought up about this whole thing?
I can't.
Could you say that at a wedding, that the noise they're making?
Well...
At a wedding, say at that farm, is considered disorderly conduct, or is this unruly people disorderly conduct?
Well, a wedding, in, in my mind, unless you've got, you know, like Ozzy Osbourne blaring up there, blaring his amplifiers, I mean, I don't think that a wedding would be considered disorderly conduct, um, in my opinion, but I mean...
That's what I'm wondering, is the definition of the actual disorderly conduct, to disrupt the public, to what extent?
One of the big issues that was brought up before involved gunfire, for example. And, you know, not being a lawyer, I don't know how that would end up if someone were charged with that, but the fact is, you know, that would obviously, I would think, proven to be disturbing the peace, but it's addressed in this, in this ordinance. Another thing too, and Jim is exactly right, because that was brought up and been a problem, and maybe not all of this piece of property don't know, but also, if you hire a live band and you're playing at eleven o'clock at night when people are trying to sleep, I mean, I think that starts getting to the point of disturbing the peace. If your neighbors that live maybe fifty, a hundred yards away are trying to sleep, and you've got a band playing, um, and again, I'm just using that as an example. You know, I don't know, I, I can't tell you what the definition of disorderly conduct is exactly, or specifically.
Well, that's what I was wondering, because when you talk about wedding, christening, there's many people in the Latin community, they'll play music all night long, and the neighborhood sort of like knows it, as they get used to it, and I'm just wondering, how far does the county go as far as the noise ordinance in the county? Whereas, in most cities, like, I don't know, Allee, Dalton, places like that, you can't have that, like, in the city. And, of course, as far as gunfire, were you around New Year's Eve? It's not like a war zone out there.
Well, there, there, now, there is a state law that allows for fireworks during this season.
They mark fireworks.
But what, what things like christenings, weddings, bar mitzvahs, whatever, where they have a live band in their backyard, is this considered disorderly conduct if it goes after ten thirty in the county?
You know, according to this here, there's not a time limit on the, uh...
Exactly.
So, you know, now...
But it makes it hardly enforceable.
Well, you know, I, I guess that's, depends on the deputy that's called out.
Oh, yeah.
It's gonna be up to the discretion of, yeah, the deputy and what have you, you know, in all honesty, if, say hypothetically, someone, because I live out the county, if somebody had whatever type of party or get together, and at two o'clock in the morning, I'm hearing loud music, you know, I'm gonna a little bit, be a little bit agitated. And I'm sorry, that's disturbing the peace. I think there's many people who wouldn't disagree with that, with my opinion that at two o'clock in the morning, or one o'clock in the morning, that's disturbing the peace, if I'm trying to sleep or whatever.
But the way this is written, two o'clock in the afternoon...
Well, that's, that's, you know...
Yeah, that's, that's, that's definitely...
Right. Now, again, I don't think, I think most people are reasonable, now again, you know, there's always gonna be exceptions.
Oh, yeah.
You know, most people are reasonable. I mean, you know, if at two o'clock in the afternoon, a Saturday afternoon, you're having a party, whatever, fine, whatever, but at two, two o'clock in the morning, you know...
I had a neighbor call the sheriff on me because I was target shooting in the backyard, and they were like eighty acres away, and I was disturbing the peace, like, and the deputy said I was fine.
And, and that's fine, something like, come be, to be honest with you, I'm, I'm an NRA instructor, I've got middle range in my backyard too, and I, yeah, I don't do it all the time, but I do go up there and shoot a few rounds every now and then, and I had, a year and a half ago, I had somebody call, because they were concerned, it wasn't so much disturbing the peace, they were just afraid.
What's going on?
Right, and so, and I guess nowadays, at times, you know, they didn't know if some mad man or ISIS had come in and started blowing up the neighborhood, not that I live in the neighborhood, but, um, so they, you know, Rick, Rick Hales came out, and of course, he knew me, and, but he had come out, and I said, I took him to the, out where I shoot, I said, Rick, now if you see something wrong, would please tell me, and I'll never do it again. He said, no, he said, you know, you've got a backdrop, you've got targets here, steel targets, you've got a backdrop, and what the slope of the land is, and, you know...
The deputy, my dominant, the deputy, he was a young deputy, he was very grateful, he was very nice, and he inspected the rain, he goes, it's perfect rain, you're down, and then the mountain comes back up, and might have been a fifty cal or forty-five if you were shooting the, the Desert Eagle, you know?
I was just saying, just that one through ten here, pretty much explains bulligans. I'll put it in that word, you know, fighting, quarreling, defecating, vulgarizing, language, striking, attempting to strike, this is definitions of disorderly conduct.
Yeah.
You know, if somebody's having a christening, or rain, or something like that, and if, like you said, a family of fifty or more, how many people have that?
All of us live, most of us do. So, so, but anyhow, you know, you know, this, it goes back to using good judgment, common courtesy, and respect of your...
Respect your neighbor.
Respect your neighbors.
Right.
So, you know, yeah, now, you may have one that you could have five people over and have them cooking hamburgers out, and that may just, they're just gonna be a pain in the, you know, what? Well, you know what? That's what calls me, I better turn that off, stop it. That's what calls me, that's what calls me to invite five or ten more over and just... So, again, just common courtesy and using good judgment.
Common courtesy is one, yes, but it's pretty well described here, what I call bulligans.
Right.
Acts.
Yes, sir.
You know, I got a question, talking about the permit event being withdrawn, does that mean it's just gonna be table for a later date, or is it...
It's pulling, I mean, it's pulling. Now, again, somebody could come in to this meeting, or maybe a board commissioner meeting, and say, hey, you know, I think we need to have a special events permit or ordinance there, okay?
They're real, how many chairs, is that what affects?
Well, exactly. So, you know, anybody has the right to bring up anything. I mean, we've had, for instance, if Mr. Butler had, we voted against Mr. Butler's request, he could come back next month, if he wanted to take the time and spend the resources to do so, and reapply. You know, the Dollar General store that was voted down last month, they can come back either in that same location or another location next month.
Well, the reason I ask that is, I received this on, you know, about this on Sunday, and then I received word that it'd been canceled, withdrawn on Sunday.
Right.
I said, how are they gonna do that when the board don't even meet on Sunday? Unless they got something going on that we don't know about.
No, that was, because Rob, Rob explained that, so.
You were late for that.
No, he showed up. Yeah. Well, that, he, he had just got done because he wanted to interfere with our town, we start promptly at six o'clock, so, but anyhow, yes.
Well, I'm definitely gonna put you on the spot here. For, I've been covering y'all for years, and like with the motorcycle rally, at Stone Mill, Tatum Acres, various other events, your group has said, our hands are tied, we don't have the ordinances in place, we cannot approve this, we cannot grant this. Now that you've pulled this, and I agree, there were a lot of, there were a lot of problems of what was presented.
Right.
Should have Stone Mill and Tatum Acres and all the other groups come back in, said, all right, we're back. Does that open that back up for those groups? Will you now be able to say, well, we have the ordinances in place?
Well, if they choose to, but I mean, you know, the way I, and I guess Phil, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, or Richard, if I'm Tatum Acres, I can go ahead and have these special events now, so long as I don't interfere with this right here.
So you're saying now that a special events ordinance would not, or permit would not be needed for Tatum Acres, for motorcycle rally, Stone Mill?
In my, but Richard, you can probably answer that better than I could, but in my simple mind, I'll think it would, but, you know...
Just to clarify, in the land use table, we've got listed uses for what's allowed in the agriculture zoning district, and so, you know, actually, from time to time, more often than you think, we have people calling us, I had somebody calling today on the west side of the county, saying that they're interested in having special events, having a business, special events facility on their property, and it's zoned agriculture.
That probably opens up a different can of worms, though.
Well, no, it's, it's the same thing as Tatum Acres. So, Tatum Acres on the east side of the county, zoned agriculture, this property that I talked to today, the representative on the west side of the county, when a property is zoned agriculture, if they wanna have a business, a special events facility, they need to have a conditional use approval granted by the elected body, because it's related to zoning, it's, it's a use, so the board commissioners would have to approve it before we could give them a business license in our office.
So they wouldn't even need to come to this board?
No, that, um, they would need to come, just like Tatum Acres, they would come before you, you would review it, recommend it one way or the other, and, and then the board commissioners would vote on it.
What Dan is asking, now that Tatum Acres and some of these others have either been turned down, do they need to come back to this body here?
Tatum Acres has not been turned down.
Well, I mean, you say that as a...
Y'all, y'all have, y'all have recommended to the board commissioners that a special events permit be allowed with certain conditions, and that board can or cannot grant the, grant the request with or without those conditions, and they'll probably do that in the next meeting.
So, but if, say, another group came before us that we may have turned down two or three years ago, do they need to come back to us?
It's not necessarily a matter of needing, it, it's a matter of, does somebody want to have a brand new case, does somebody wanna come back, are there individual specific circumstances? For example, again, you know, let's just take, you know, a property on the west side of the county versus a property on the east side of the county. What's the acreage, what's the topo like, what are the applicants like in terms of their plan? Do they have a plan of action, hours of operation, where are they gonna park people, all those things, versus, you know, are they just coming in going, I don't know, it's speculation, but I think it sounds like a good idea to me? So, each individual case can be looked on as its own.
As its own.
Not necessarily a total precedent, just because one gets allowed doesn't mean that all of them that come in after have to be allowed.
Is that actually true? Sort of. Well, so long as we're heading into the Greg's... Well, so long as we're heading in the direction. Any other questions? Okay. Item C, we have a zoning map amendment. Richard?
Thank you, Mr. Cagle. So if y'all will, will look at the color-coded maps, as they used to say at the Air Force, they're all the identical draft copies of the official land use intensity map. Pickens County, as we know, has zoning. And in order to have zoning, we need to have on our books, in the code ordinances, a description of the zoning districts and uses that are allowed and not allowed, and then rules about the zoning districts. And we also need to have an official zoning map. In Pickens County, it's called the official land use intensity map. What's proposed as a draft is not changing anybody's private property. Ninety percent of the properties are one of three different districts. Agriculture, rural residential. And then if it's a gated community such as Big, Big Paneeb or Bentree, it's a planned community zoning district. And then there's, you know, a few properties that are zoned commercial or something else. So there's a total of actually eleven zoning districts. But the vast majority, ninety or ninety percent plus, are one of those three. And really, you know, the, the majority are one of those two, agriculture or rural residential. And again, what people's private property was zoned six months ago or a year ago is what it's zoned right now. This proposed draft map does not change anything. It officially adopts it and every year, we will officially re-adopt it just based on private requests for rezoning that have been approved. And then when somebody splits a lot or combines a lot, things like that. The information is open to the public for viewing in the sense that if you choose to table it, you're welcome to. If you choose to move it forward, January twenty-first, the board of commissioners would look at it. Either way, people can come by my office, they can call me, email me. I've got specific parts of the county here so that after the meeting, if anybody wants to come up to me and look at their particular property and the area around it, besides just looking at the overall map, I'll be glad to sit down with them if they've got time. Otherwise, if they want to sit down with me Monday through Friday, eight to five, I'd be glad to do it. But it doesn't change anything. It just, we have to have it per state of Georgia requirements if we're going to continue to have zoning.
Any questions or comments?
This will be revised once a year, depending on what changes have been made, what has been, what has been approved. That type of thing, so.
It's actually revised each time the board commissioner meets. What Richard is doing, it's just having a, going to do an annual version of it so that you can visually see.
It'll be printed once a year.
And unless, unless something comes up and we need to do other.
Richard, what, what has been done to certify the accuracy of the map? How is that done?
We've had records based on people's existing zoning. And then there's been a few properties that have not been private property, but they've been owned by utilities, owned by the county government that did not necessarily have a certain zoning district assigned to them. And so they were, you know, they were assigned the closest use that they were. In other words, if it was, say, a county government property where it was twenty-five acres and there was nothing on it, it might have been zoned agriculture. Or if it was a utility substation, let's see. It would have been zoned the closest to that, which could have been industrial just because there's not a public zoning district. There's one for industrial and two for commercial and then several residential, including one for gated communities.
So you're as confident as you can be that the map reflects accurately what all of the zoning are? Or should?
Yes, sir.
Now, this is just the unincorporated county area, exclusive city, or does it include the city cities?
Ma'am, if you'll, if you'll note, the white in the middle, that is incorporated Jasper. So you're correct that because Pickens County does not have authority over the city of Jasper, we did not include their zoning districts. Same thing for Nelson. Talking Rock, as an incorporated city, uses the zoning districts of Pickens County. So we did use their, we showed their borders, but showed that they use our zoning districts.
Any other questions or comments for Richard?
Has that, has that been published to the public or has it been put out there yet so the public can see it via newspaper or are any, any other means of communication?
Per required legal advertisement, we've not only met, but we've exceeded the newspaper advertisement. And in terms of the, the file size, as you can imagine, something that size with so many different properties, it, it's not something that we can easily say email to an individual person. However, I mean, anything that I put my hands on in the planning development office is public information. So, I mean, I, you know, I don't know if it's convenient for you or anybody else, but I mean, I, I'd be glad to meet with you face to face. I'd be glad to meet with anybody. If they can't come in eight to five, just talk to somebody over the phone. So it's all public information.
Thank you for the question. Any other questions, comments, or?
I would make a motion to accept the zoning map amendment as presented.
You need to have the move in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Item five is board comments. Any comments from the board? Item six is public comments. Any other comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to, I guess, recommend or let Richard know how much we appreciate his due diligence in getting this map clarified where it could be adept adopted and it's been overdue. And Richard, thank you for your hard work in a short period of time.
Thank you, Mr. Butler, for your comment. Yeah, and I'd like to reinforce that, because Richard's done a video, what, two months, two and a half months? So he's making a lot of progress in a very short period of time, so. Any other public comments? The next item is adjournment. Move in second. Go ahead with your second. I'm moving second. Any discussion? Thank you, Mr. Butler.